We should come to order, please. We will, we are reconvening from a special city council closed meeting. I'll ask the city attorney if there's any report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Council's in closed session this evening on conference with labor negotiator and public employee performance evaluation, and there's no reportable action under either of those items.
Thank you. We will now open the regular Galt City Council meeting at 7:02. If I can have the roll call, please.
Councilor's Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Payne, Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here. I'd like to ask everyone to rise for a silent prayer, a moment of silence. Remain standing for the flag salute. Do we have scouts?
We have no scouts in the room.
No scouts, okay. I saw you there, so I'll ask you when we do the flag salute if you guys will start that for us, or we'll have a moment of silence, please.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I could have the video statement, please.
Yes. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West Cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Okay, thank you. This time we have agenda approval additions and our deletions. I believe we have some.
I'd like to pull item E5.
E5?
E5.
Okay, and also, for legal reasons, I would ask that we move the redevelopment agency up to after public comment. We need to adopt the resolution for certain findings of the redevelopment agency and authorizing a report to the county auditor. We need to approve the redevelopment agency resolution before we approve the resolution on our consent calendar of the regular meeting. So if we can just move the entire redevelopment agency consent calendar up to after public comment. That was for the end.
And you'll guide me through that?
I will guide you.
Thank you. Okay. There were no other items or changes? Then we will move to a presentation by council member Andrew Merritt.
Thank you. Start off with a little brief history of our prescription discount card program that council authorized. This program's been going on for a little over a year now. This is the poster that you might see around town. The card is basically open to any Galt residents. It allows Galt residents to save a certain percentage on their prescription drug purchases in the city of Galt. This program has been extremely successful here in our community. We're one of only two cities in Sacramento County that participate in this program through the National League of Cities. And to date, even though we are smaller substantially than the city of Rancho Cordova, we have a higher percentage of savings, we have a higher overall savings total, and we have a higher participant percentage based on per capita than any other city that's participating in Sacramento County. So it's actually been a fantastic program. There's a couple business leaders that are here tonight that are going to come up and accept certificates of recognition on behalf of their store. This is, this has been extremely well, the buy-in that has taken place from the stores in this community. Would've been very easy for the stores to just not participate in the program because there is a little more paperwork involved in actually processing the prescription with this card. But our businesses, Rite Aid, Rayleigh's, and CVS pharmacies, they've done an amazing job in not only utilizing the project card with residents, but they're also selling the product to members of the community. So at this time, I'd like to call forward Ally Roll from CBS pharmacies and Bruce Wizwell from Rite Aid. Give me a quick. Is there a representative from Rayleigh's store that's here tonight? Okay. Show certificate of recognition. This first one will go to Rite Aid stores. It reads, "In recognition of your service to the Galt community through participation in the City of Galt Prescription Discount Card Program. Through your participation, Galt residents have saved over 19% on eligible prescription purchases. Your commitment to the customers and community that you serve is commendable." And this is Bruce Wizwell, accepting on behalf of Rite Aid. And then for CVS Pharmacy, it also reads, "In recognition of your service to the Galt community through participation in the City of Galt Prescription Discount Card Program. Through your participation, Galt residents have saved over 19% on eligible prescription purchases. Your commitment to the customers and community that you serve is commendable." I'd like to give both of these businesses, as well as Rayleigh's, who was not here tonight, a big round of applause for participating in this program. With the economy the way that it is, it's really important that residents be able to save money wherever possible. And like I said, these three stores have all not only just adopted policies to allow the use of this card, they have actually been selling the product to customers in order to help them save money. So I'd like to give them a big round of applause.
(applause)
They've also been posting this material in the city clerk's office. And I know a lot of the people that have called to comment about this card have actually said that they picked up their card in the clerk's office.
We've distributed and delivered a couple, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Very popular.
Thank you, Andrew. I'm gonna go to public comment first, right?
Yes.
And do we have some speakers?
I do. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Excuse me, Rick Walters?
My name's Rick Walters, and I live in the city of Galt, thank you. I'm gonna talk about the master utility plan that you're gonna discuss later on tonight, but I wanted to get it in the public record first. The average residential cost for sewer, service of sewer, water, and storm drain is currently $935 a year. At the end of 20 years, each existing resident, 7,200 of us, will pay a total of $134,640,000 to Public Works. In addition to the $134 million, each property owner pays a percentage of his or her property taxes for funding of capital improvements and administration of our Public Works Department. That revenue is $57,600,000 for 20 years. Now, if you total the two revenues together, that total is $192,240,000, or $26,700 per household for 20 years at current rates. That's quite a bit of a burden on us. Now, if this city can't run the Public Works Department with the projected revenue of $192 million, then we need to start asking some serious questions concerning our Public Works administration policies and agendas. Far too often, it's easier for cities to ask for more money than restrain or reduce spending. Your fellow citizens are doing just that. They're living within a tightly restrained budget and are weary of any program that will upset their budget or increase costs. With this master utility plan, you're asking the ratepayers, once again, to assume $63 million in more debt. This new massive debt is supposed to be used to replace existing collection systems in the older part of town and neighborhood. I was under the impression that our utility bill was designed for just that set of replacement costs, along with the redevelopment agency. The wastewater collection system, according to the master utility plan, indicates that the existing residential systems have sufficient capacity flows. The problem is not with the existing collection system. The problem exists when new development adds to the system. This is called expanding the system. So why should we pay for new development? Why not add a new collection and treatment system for future development in other cities? How about thinking outside the box and coming up with other options that will not affect the existing ratepayers? It is perfectly clear to me that this public works problem is not going to go away soon. It's always gonna be with us, so we need to stop this mindset of constantly asking citizens for more money. How about trying this? One, do only those capital improvements that are necessary for the well-being and safety of the existing residents. Two, cut capital improvement projects by 50% and prioritize. Three, freeze all city workers' pay and compensation for three years. Four, use redevelopment money for aging infrastructure needs. Five, work within the budget you have. Six, give developers fee deferrals for infill of city properties. Seven, reduce expansion of government. Run smaller and leaner. And eight, and this is important, you have to address this issue at this council. You have to address new union contracts with the city. Otherwise, you're gonna be before us asking for more money to infinity. We don't need further studies, reports, conferences, community input, persuasive tactics, or what they call a three-card monte. For us to say enough is enough. The citizens of Galt will fight you on this massive $63 million increase proposed by our Public Works Department. You have to ask yourself one question. Would you go into debt knowing that you couldn't afford it? Well, that's exactly what this master utility plan is asking us to do, go into more debt. Thank you.
Thank you. We have any other speakers?
We have no other speakers.
Okay. We will, let's see. We will now adjourn to the redevelopment agency. Adjourn to the redevelopment agency. If I can have the roll call, please.
Ordinance Payne?
Here.
Claire? Here.
Payne, Meredith?
Here.
Shelton?
Here. Public comment?
I have no speaker sheets.
Information consent agenda items, if you could read those, please.
Item number one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of February 2nd, 2010. Number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. Number three, a resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a subordination agreement with DNS Development and Five Star Bank relating to Oddfellow's building rehabilitation loan. And number four, resolution making certain findings related to the redevelopment agency of the city of Galt and authorizing a report to county auditor pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 33690 and 33691.
Any questions or comments? If none, I'll ask for a motion.
Move we adopt the proposed consent agenda?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. No further discussion. Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passed. Now, we will reconvene back to regular city council meetings. And the next item is information consent calendar. If you could read those items, please.
Yes. Number one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of February 2nd, 2010. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, adopt a resolution for statewide park program grant funds, Walker Park. Number four, contract for supplemental engineering services. Number five, which was pulled and will be discussed, participation in SREA grant application, residential retrofit program, state energy program. Number six, a resolution establishing a litigation hold policy. Number seven, real property acquisition, Tyrone and Monica Beekman Central Galt Interchange Project. Number eight, real property acquisition, Galt Joint Union High School District Central Galt Interchange Project. Number nine, statewide local streets and roads needs assessment. And number 10, resolution making certain findings related to the redevelopment agency of the city of Galt and authorizing a report to county auditor pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 33690 and 33691.
Okay, so we will move over to number five, Andrew.
Yeah, I have some questions about the two agencies that were listed in the staff reports as being joint partners with SMUT and all of the cities in Sacramento County in this venture. What is Consol Energy? And I think the other one was Contractors Association for Responsible Building or something along those lines.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Yeah, Consol is a, they're, I guess, a team leader. It's a diverse group of companies that are working to try and create energy solutions to build production housing that is 40 to 70% more efficient than other new homes. So it's a group of companies that have mostly been working with Valley Vision, but they have joined together on this application. The CPBCA is a nonprofit that trains contractors and energy auditors in energy efficiency, and they're gonna be doing a lot of the truth testing on some of these jobs. They'll be testing 15% to make sure that the contractor quality is up there and meets the standards.
So it's not an agency that requires membership in order to participate in this program? You don't have to belong to the California Building Performance Contractors Association to do the work?
No, you do not.
Okay. And the reason that this is important, we have a couple local solar contractors that are looking to do some of this work here in town, so I don't want to exclude them in any way from being able to do that.
I was gonna say, Maisy at Valley Vision can give you a little information. They're kind of an outside group that's helping give them some technical expertise on some of this, 'cause they kind of don't have staff people who can evaluate it, so.
I think contractors will have to show that they have gone through an adequate training program, but they do not have to be a member of any particular organization.
Okay, the training program, is it required that they do it through this California Building Performance Contractors Association?
No, actually, CETA and Los Rios are gonna be doing most of the training.
Okay, fantastic. Right, with that, I'd like to move staff's recommendations.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion then? No comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 And I'd also like to make a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar.
I'll second that as well.
First and a second. No further comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four up. Okay. Next item, scheduled matters.
City Council, Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management Board, appointment to alternate position.
Yeah, when I brought this last time, we were operating on some gray information we wanted to get definition on. There was some question as to whether whoever would be my alternate could vote in my absence. We've since gotten clarification. If I can throw that point in, clarification. And yes, that person can take the seat and vote, and we'll make sure that, in this case with Andrew, that he also has the agenda. I don't know, you're not currently getting copied, I don't believe, 'cause we're just getting set up. So I think we just need to bring it back and redo the effort, if you will, to make sure there was no doubt that he is being chosen as a voting member.
Yeah. If we can vote on him.
Yeah, to re- actually officially.
Right, and then we just need to send the board, clerk of the board, and the executive director that that is our appointment. So with that, I will, assuming Andrew hasn't changed his mind, I will nominate Andrew again as that alternate.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All right. We need to vote?
Yep.
Okay. No, you're not gonna make any comments, so.
Just thank you again, Darren. For the nomination.
We weren't gonna lie, 'cause you already said you did, so. I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four officially. Thank you for doing that. Next item is...
City Attorney, ordinance repealing and adopting, and re-adopting, excuse me, Chapter 5.50 of the Galt Municipal Code entitled Cable Television.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. This is a minor cleanup item, but as the council's aware, Galt is a member of the Sacramento Cable Commission, and all the member agencies of that group have previously adopted the same administrative ordinances. Those ordinances are about 130 pages in length, and because of the length of those ordinances, you wisely chose not to make those part of your municipal code, or it would've turned it from a one-volume bestseller to a two-volume bestseller. But one of the items that we noticed when we were trying to do some cleanup on those ordinances is that we felt that it was kind of hard for the public, who might go to the municipal code, to understand where to find the law as it relates to cable television. So what we have done is we've revised the one short paragraph that is in your municipal code that would lead members of the public to the 130-volume set. So that's the ordinance that is before you for consideration this evening. The recommendation is to introduce the ordinance repealing and re-adopting Chapter 5.50 of the Galt Municipal Code and wait for a reading.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Second?
We have a first and a second. No further discussion. We'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed. Four up. Next item?
Item, ordinance amending Section 8.20.210 of Chapter 8.20 of the Galt Municipal Code pertaining to summary abatement of substandard housing.
This ordinance also is a minor modification. And basically, under existing Chapter 8.20, there are various situations that are listed in that ordinance that are identified as adverse situations existing on property, and under that ordinance, the city has the ability to rectify those problems, sometimes through summary abatement. Now, there's a subcategory of those property deficiencies called substandard housing items. And one of those particular items relates to a situation where water or sewer service is not available to a property. That is, in fact, a substandard housing condition. And sometimes that's created because physically, the piping is not in place or has been destroyed. But there's also a circumstance that exists where if somebody does not pay their bills, then that service is discontinued to the property, and if they continue to reside in the house, then they are residing in a house that is now substandard, because it doesn't have sanitation facilities and water. When we were looking at the code and various options available to staff, it was not clear under existing ordinances that the city has the ability to summarily abate those types of situations. So basically, a summary abatement in that situation would be to go in and get a court order to have people residing in the house removed from the home. And typically, it's exercised not as much to protect the adults in the home, but sometimes there's elderly folks that are living in those types of houses, sometimes there's children that are living in those types of houses, and there's a need to get them out of those situations. So what the ordinance is before you tonight is a clarification of 820.210 to make it clear that the city has the ability to exercise summary abatement processes for substandard housing. It's just a tool. It doesn't mandate that we utilize the tool. It just gives us a clarification of the existence of this tool if we have that type of a situation existing within the community. So with that long explanation, I'd be happy to respond to any questions. Again, before you tonight is recommended action to introduce the ordinance and wait for a reading.
Comments from the council?
I feel pretty uncomfortable with that, and maybe we can explore it a little bit further, considering the conditions today where people are unemployed and having their water shut off. It seems like adding salt to the wound than to kick them out of their home. Is that where this is, is that the possibility, or?
Well, is it a possibility, yes. If you don't adopt the ordinance tonight, then there would be a question whether or not we could deal with the situation under a summary process, which means an expedited process. We certainly can go through an abatement process, which is typically a multi-month process. Our concerns that we sometimes face in these situations, and there's not, there's not an immediate need to utilize this ordinance. In other words, if you adopt it at the next meeting, there's not a particular situation that we need to rectify. But the situation would potentially be that if somebody does not have water service to their home, then they cannot utilize, you know, first of all, they can't cook and shower and maintain levels of cleanliness, but they also cannot use their sanitary sewer service. And so what happens in those situations is people use all kinds of last resort methods, such as utilizing their yards. And that, you know, that leads to other sanitary issues and complaints from neighbors. And so in a situation where we have folks that don't have water service and they're living in their homes, and they're not working with us towards a very quick resolution of the issue, then I think that it's incumbent upon us to address the problem and not wait until it becomes a neighborhood health and safety concern. So as I indicated, this change in the ordinance would not give staff the unilateral right to go and remove folks from their home. We can only remove people from their house if we go to court and we get a court order. Now, that would be done in an expedited fashion. The way it would work is we would give the property owner and the tenants, if it was a tenant situation, 72 hours notice. If there was not resolution, then we would go to court and would ask for a court order to have the folks removed from their home. If it was a situation where there were children involved, then we would also be in contact with Child Protective Services to make sure those folks, those children were taken care of. So that's the type of situation we were hoping to not have to address, but we are putting a tool in place to address. And if the situation were to develop, it's too long of a process to come to the city council at that point in time and to take a month-long process to get that power in place.
If a citizen was in that situation and used his backyard for sanitary reasons, wouldn't it already be covered under the health department? Wouldn't that be a violation? wouldn't it already be covered under the Health Department? Wouldn't that be a violation without this ordinance?
Um, there is, uh, there's certainly an argument that, uh, it would be, and under your existing ordinance, there is still an argument that we would, uh, be able to make these, uh, resolve the problem in the same way. But, uh, when we took a look at it, uh, in the last few weeks, we felt that it would be better to clarify it so that if we ever found ourselves utilizing this method and found ourselves in court on this item, that there would be no question to the judge that the council had authorized, uh, this summary abatement process in a substandard housing situation. So the answer to your question is yes. I think it's, it's probably resolved, but this is to make sure that if we need to do, to utilize it, that we can be successful.
If I can throw in a, a, a non-legal opinion on that, first to make sure people understand we're taking sanitary, we're talking about people going to the bathroom in their backyard. Make sure everybody knows what we're talking about. I suspect it would be harder to prove in court that someone was doing that than to prove they have no means of using the toilets in the house, given there's no water to flush them, so. Um, so I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't even want to think about what it would take to prove in a court of law the second, but the first one, that there's no functioning water is pretty, pretty easily shown, I think. And, and I agree. Hopefully, this isn't something to make people's lives worse, but given, even under this, the timeframe from the first notice, so to speak, and to the actual action, hopefully people would resolve whatever they need to before we got that far and got them out of their homes. But I, I do know, I can't say I know of anyone in the city, but I know of occurrences in cities where that's what's going on. People are, in some cases, hauling buckets of water over and refilling the tank and the toilet type of thing, and, and as you say, there's, there's some people in those situations, kids in particular, who have no real way to change what's happening. They're just sort of caught in the circumstances.
I think if there's concern by the council in, in removing folks from their home, and, you know, I want to remind you, there's not, we don't have an immediate situation that we're, we need to address right now. But if the concern is removing folks from their home, then we ought to take a step back and decide whether or not you're going to turn off the utilities for non-payment. Because if we, and that is our current practice, because we can't look to our other residents to subsidize those people that don't pay, and you've made a policy decision in the past that we're not going to use general fund revenue for those, uh, those unique situations of paying individual water bills, for a variety of reasons. But once we have turned off the water because folks have either failed to pay or refused to pay, um, it, it does not seem appropriate to then step back from the situation and, and just remove ourselves from any responsibility for a potential health and safety consideration, where folks are now living in a home without appropriate health and sanitary means.
Typically, these things have only come up as an issue at months, months after the water's been turned off. Typically, probably ninety-eight percent of people get their water turned off, it's back on within a week. So we're not talking about those people. We're talking about people that are living in these conditions for months on end. With the, not the ability to, to take a shower, to flush the toilet, and it becomes a major issue. And most of these are places where people are renting from a landlord. And so, um, we've had difficulties somewhat in the past of having any leverage against the landlord to provide sewer and water service to their tenants. And so this provides us with just another, like Steve said, kind of an option of last resort, another means, another option that we can use to get, to get these necessary services turned on back at the homes.
Is there a timeframe involved in this? Like, if you go without hot water for what? Is it a month?
Well, the, um, if you go into the Health and Safety Code, uh, if, if you didn't, if you did not approve this, uh, this ordinance tonight, then, uh, the standard process to remove somebody from a substandard home is about a thirty-day process from the time you, you go into court. What this change would do would give us an option to go in after seventy-two hours' notice, uh, to have somebody removed. And basically, it allows us to get in front of the problem, and if we know that we have, uh, a, a, a sensitive situation, such as children living in the home, that's when we might be a little bit more proactive in moving, uh, moving aggressively, because the, uh, the political repercussions from allowing the water to be shut off at a residence, knowing that there are children residing in the house, and not taking action, um, might be far greater than taking action, having folks removed, and in the case of minors, working with other regional agencies to make sure that they are housed in safe and sanitary, uh, homes.
Even though the process might take seventy-two hours, the time that that would actually start usually takes a while, because if somebody, maybe Inez can chime in as far as the time it takes for us to, to, to notice when somebody, um, not only has not paid their water bill, but now we've shut off, but we've shut off the water. Um, typically, Public Works will go out and do what we call a vacant home check. So we have a lot of units throughout the city that have their water turned off now, and that's okay. It's only those that have people living in the home, and it's a very limited number. And so we do what we call vacant home checks. We go around Public Works, inspect to make sure that some, nobody's living in those homes, and that information gets sent out. I don't know what the timeframe is from the day that somebody turns off, that the Public Works turns off the water, to when we would actually receive notification that that home might be occupied. How long does that typically take?
Actually, we've just started, well, we've been tracking this now for just under a year, but, um, we try to do that every month. So if we do the shut offs in one month, so for instance, January, February, they'd become delinquent on March 5th, then we start a shut off process at the end of March. Then a month later, we would go back out and say, give a list to Public Works and ask them to let us know if someone is still living there or if it is vacant, and they might respond back and says, appears to be occupied, or appears vacant, and then probably the next month. So it's on a monthly basis. When we shut them off again, so every other month, we'll go out there and see if the services are still off. Um, that's what we're looking for as well. Not only if it's occupied, but if it is occupied, did they, um, initiate services again? Did they pay for those services? Are they connecting to a neighbor and so forth? So we're kind of reviewing for a couple of different things when Public Works staff do go out there, and it is on a monthly basis.
It's gonna be at least thirty days from the time the water's turned off, and probably sixty to eight.
It's usually at least sixty days.
Usually about sixty days, before we do anything.
How many do we know of in the city right now, Inez?
The ones that we're talking about to this, uh, that they have been, um, their services have been off and it's been for an extended period of time, uh, we have under ten. I think there's around seven accounts right now that we're looking at. Um, and I think that that has actually been addressed to, by about two more, so maybe five. So we've been discussing this when we first started, about ten accounts, and over the last two, three months, I think it's been down to about five, about five.
What is preventing us right now from contacting Child Protective Services once we find out? I mean, once they actually enter the home, they're gonna come in and take the children if they believe they're living in an unsanitary environment?
Yeah, there's nothing that, there's nothing that prevents us from doing that, and in fact, we, uh, have done that where the, the situation presents itself.
So we don't really need to adopt the change to the code to protect the children living in these conditions? All we need to do is make a phone call to CPS?
Um, well, that, yes, that is, that is one option. Um, I think there's been some circumstances where there's been, uh, elderly, elderly folks living in the home, but, um, you know, I guess we're, we're just presenting this tonight, making you aware of the fact that, uh, we think as your code currently exists, there's not an opportunity to, uh, to go through a summary abatement process. If, if the council's desire that, uh, um, that we not have the option to, to use this expedited process, then we'll just, uh, continue to resort to those provisions that currently exist.
I'm glad Barbara picked up on the, uh, the hot water issue, too, because when I read the, the staff report, I saw that, and I, I was trying to understand why we would deem having the hot water actually turned on as being a, a requirement to be living in a sanitary environment.
Well, there is a, when you go into the Health and Safety Code, there are certain provisions, uh, provisions that are listed, which, the absence of which, uh, indicates that a home is substandard, and one of those items indicates a lack of, uh, running cold and hot water.
So if somebody keeps current with their city of Galt utility bill, but falls behind on their PGME bill, technically, we could use the code now to move forward and force them to vacate the property?
Um, or to get, or to get it, uh, corrected.
Corrected.
That's right, to get it fixed. I mean, that's always our, our preference, is that if somebody is living in a substandard home, whether it's because the roof is, uh, falling in, or the, uh, you know, the pipes are deteriorating, or, you know, if you go in there, weatherproofing is, a lack of weatherproofing is one substandard condition as well, that there's no, uh, replaced glass in windows. You know, our preference always is that folks maintain their property and they, uh, work with the city towards that end. Um, and there's actually, in your, uh, interme- in your municipal code right now, um, though it wouldn't be under a summary process, um, if there was the absence of, um, or any of those substandard housing conditions, including a lack of hot water, uh, we could utilize that, uh, to have somebody either fix the home or ultimately, uh, vacate it. Now, with any of your ordinances that are on the books, it doesn't compel your code enforcement staff to act in every situation. Um, the council's expectation, I hope, is that there's a degree of common sense applied to every situation, and that's how we try to operate, is that, um, we take the ordinances, the tools that are available, and apply it utilizing common sense with the goal in mind to get folks to, uh, to resolve the problem, not to, to force people to not, you know, to have to leave their homes.
What are the additional fees that a family would incur after all those steps have been taken?
I don't, I don't think there'd be any additional, um, well, I guess there, there could be additional fees. If we went through a, a summary abatement process, um, there is a mechanism in your ordinance to, uh, um, to lean the property for, uh, for any, uh, code enforcement, uh, fines. So I guess ultimately, in addition to paying to have the water, um, water service restarted, there would be, uh, code enforcement, uh, uh, code enforcement expenses would be, uh, imposed on the property, which is typical for any of your code enforcement situations, that we look to recover those costs from, from the property owners that, uh, caused the situation.
I guess I, I have the same reservations that Vice Mayor Payne does. I just, I'm, I'm really fearful that this could be the tipping point in, in certain situations, where a family was really close to getting the water reconnected again, and maybe fell behind for a month, and didn't know that they were actually gonna come out and turn the water off, thought they had some type of a grace period, and they're asked to vacate the property, and then all of these legal fees are piled on top, and then by that point, there's just no way that they can climb out of the hole that they've dug themselves in, so. I'm fearful about making it any faster to, to force homeowners to vacate the property.
I feel the same way, and the thing that I envision happening is if they are made to be removed from their home, I can see them living in their vehicles or in a tent, and what kind of sanitary conditions will that create? Um, that, you know, if you go past what happens when you do that to them, and considering the, the, uh, financial situation of, of the county as far as helping these people, it, yeah, I, I don't think that about this.
Okay. It appeared the chief wanted to make a comment, and I was curious what it was.
Well, the comment that, uh, that had come up about CPS, and we've actually contacted CPS, at least one, maybe two cases. I was gonna ask the chief to see, to respond from CPS and what might have been done on that, and I, why don't you come on up really quick?
Hi, good evening. Um, you know, we actually sent, um, a police employee out to all of these residents to see if there was any, uh, extension of social services that could be offered, um, along the same spirit that this conversation is going tonight. Um, and in a couple of cases, um, we notified by law CPS, um, but frankly, CPS, uh, inspected the properties and said, well, it's not bad enough to take the children away from the, the parents. Uh, it's certainly not good, but it's not that bad. Uh, and that was it. CPS went away, and everything else stayed the same.
How bad were the conditions, uh, described by your officers?
Um, no, no flushable toilets, no running water, um, water in pots in the refrigerators, you know, um, neighbor's hose hooked up through the window. That's how they were getting their water. No hot water at all, and they had a less than six-month-old infant in the house. So, but, I mean, it didn't look like, you know, uh, imminent life-threatening, but certainly not, probably not the best of circumstances.
So, uh, Vice Mayor's comment, sort of camping in their house?
Pretty much.
At least they had a roof.
I have a comment.
Wow.
And it's a fire and life safety issue. I'd be curious to know the number of homes that had fire sprinklers in them. I know the city has an ordinance, and I know sprinklers are, are new, but a lot of the apartments, if it's a condo or apartment, most all of those were, were required to have, uh, fire sprinkler systems in them, and all the way back to nineteen eighty-seven, fire sprinkler, uh, not fire sprinklers, but smoke detectors were required to be electrical. So if we have no power, we have no water, and, uh, I, I'm really concerned that if there is a fire due to the use of candles or some type of flamble for cooking, that we would have a fire, and I believe it throws us, now that it's been brought to light, and, um, I'm real concerned that we don't move forward with this and use this as a tool to, uh, try to expedite and move these people. I would hate to think that there would be, and I know it's Murphy's Law, you know, I'm really reaching out there, but in my line of business and what I've done for many years, if it is required or if it's not required, but it was installed, sprinklers were requ- you know, not required, but you input them in and you put smoke detectors in, I would hate to think that there would be a disaster and a fire and somebody got hurt. I really think we need to move forward with this.
And I would agree. I, most people know I did not support, and still don't, that we require people to put fire sprinklers in their homes. I think that's a personal choice. But if I was gonna pick what people can afford, I'd, I'd say water, running water ought to be a higher priority than making them spend thousands of dollars to put sprinklers in their home. And I certainly agree, having required them to put in there, we ought to support the spirit of the law and require there be water in the system if we're gonna make them have a system. So, so I would support the motion. I understand the concerns, and I will judge, uh, future action of the staff, but I have no reason to believe they would abuse this, and I think it would be more important that they have this when they need it. And hearing what the chief said, that obviously some restraint is being used already, uh, even though there are situations that are unfortunate, that people aren't just using that to make people's lives even more difficult.
Further comments?
Sir, I'll move staff's recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for the sake of the vote.
Okay. Motion's been made. Further discussion? No? Call for the vote?
No.
Aye?
No.
Aye. Deadline.
Okay.
Next item? Wastewater collection, water distribution, and storm drainage systems, master plan. master plans.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The next item for council's consideration is a progress status update for the wastewater collection, water distribution, and storm drainage systems master plans. We're asking that council view the presentation, solicit public comment, and give direction to staff as deemed appropriate. Back in August of 2008, council authorized a contract with Corolla Engineers to develop master plans for our water, wastewater, and storm drainage systems. Development of these master plans was called for by the recently adopted General Plan Implementation Program. The reason we need the master plans is they will provide us with the capacity for future growth and provide for orderly expansion of the systems. They'll also serve as the basis for the ongoing capital improvement program to identify specific projects. They will be the basis for establishing priorities for infrastructure, the infrastructure responsibilities for developers, and capital improvement fees. Corolla's been working on this project for about eighteen months, and they have now completed the draft master plans. We have, at the very end of the project, had some savings, we didn't spend any contingency funds, so we've added a look at a revamped, purple pipe reclaim water system to see if that's feasible. We've not completed work on that aspect. The master plans we're gonna show you tonight, it's a thumbnail sketch of what the ultimate system will look like, showing estimated sizing and alignment of the pipelines, locations of lift stations, reservoirs, wells, and treatment plants. It's very broad brush, if, these are estimated locations, each of these individual lines will be designed as part of a specific improvement, or a development, or a specific plan. This just gives a general guideline as to which areas drain where, and what the overall capacity sizings are. We wanna talk a little bit about rates and fees. In order to put this project together, we used the General Plan 2030 build-out, and as Corolla will explain, we started where we're at today, and we said, "Okay, by 2030, when we're built out, we're gonna have everything done that we need to." That established a timeline, and also established some fees. We know that's not a reasonable approach to the growth at, right now, because we're not gonna grow that fast, but we had to pick something. And so this is consistent with the general plan. Obviously, once we implement this plan, then staff will look at it as a tool to move forward to guide the actual expenditure on an annual basis for capital improvements. We'll have to adjust them for the actual growth as we look ahead in our five-year plan. Once we get through looking at the plans, we're gonna talk to you briefly about what we're gonna do next. We're gonna estimate ultimate fees, we're gonna talk about rates in the future. Once we get to that point, then we're gonna talk to the building community and get their input, talk about which lines go where, what they want included in the program, what they don't want included in the program. And we're gonna bring the whole package back to council probably sometime in the fall with the final master plans, the fee schedules, and the environmental clearance documents. So with me tonight are Bill Forrest, my senior engineer, he's the city's project manager, and to my immediate right is Scott Parker with Corolla Engineers, and Jose Gutierrez with Corolla Engineers. They've done a very good job for us, and they were also the engineers that you ordered the task order contract to tonight. We look forward to working with them in the future, and I'll pass it over to Corolla.
Okay, thank you. Can everybody hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay. Presentation outlined, tonight we're gonna talk about the master plan objectives, what we set out to accomplish. I'll give you an overview of the existing city limits and the study area boundary, as Greg mentioned, being consistent with the general plan, discuss the projected growth through year 2030, and, and then I'll go into each individual wastewater collection, storm drainage, and water distribution system analysis. The master plan objectives were to evaluate the adequacy of the existing water distribution, wastewater collection, and storm drainage systems. I wanna note that the wastewater treatment plant was not part of this evaluation. Another objective was to develop improvements to correct existing deficiencies, and provide a plan for the orderly provision of required infrastructure improvements to serve future needs and development as the city grows beyond its current city limits and extends urban services to future users. And also to establish preliminary cost estimates as a basis for updating the capital infrastructure ease programs. The master plan study boundary area was consistent with your general plan boundary and land use. This map is taken directly from your general plan document. The red dash line represents the boundary of the general plan study area, the general plan boundary, and the yellow area shows the majority land use, that's single-family residential land uses, and you can see that's the majority of your existing city limits and your future service area. The other areas represent commercial, industrial, multifamily land uses, but our document was consistent with your general plan. This figure just shows the existing city, city limits in yellow, and again, the study area boundary in the red dash, which was consistent with your general plan boundary. Forecast growth, for all these projects, we like to predict out what's gonna happen in the future. When we started the project, the data that we had was for 2007, the city's population was about two to twenty-three thousand five hundred people. The general plan forecasted growth, an averaging of growth of about 3.4% through build-out. As we know, the last couple of years, your growth has been about 1%, so this, this graph is, isn't depicting accurately what's happened recently, but in the long term, you might have rapid growth which will get you, might get you back to the average. At build-out, the city's population could reach fifty thousand one hundred people. Again, this is just a forecast. The overall general plan appro, general approach to the master plans for all three, we evaluated the adequacy, adequacy of the existing system, we determined if improvements were needed to correct existing deficiencies, we evaluated future needs and developments, we optimized existing facilities to extend urban services. When I say that, we, we first looked at using what you had in the ground today before we proposed any recommendations for, for more infrastructure. We determined infrastructure improvements to serve future needs and developments as your urban services are extended, and then determined economical solutions. We, we actually did take a close look at some of the more economical solutions to solving some of these existing and future deficiencies. Now, existing and future, what's an existing versus a future improvement? An existing improvement corrects an existing capacity deficiency, or rehabilitates an existing facility. And I guess the easiest way to explain this is, if the city stopped growing today, would you need that improvement? If the answer is yes, then that went into the category of existing deficiency, or existing improvement, and those are typically funded through user rates. Your future improvements serve new users. Those are either developer-installed improvements, pipelines, pump stations, those sorts of things, or their future improvements are funded through development impact fees collected by the Some of the other improvements that we considered in this master plan to extend the useful life of your facilities were pipeline replacement or rehabilitation programs. Instead of completely taking the pipeline out, we look at other options of, of rehabilitating it to extend the useful life of that pipeline. We also looked at replacing or rehabilitating existing groundwater wells, manhole replacement program to replace aging infrastructure, looking at lift station and pump station replacement or rehabilitation programs, and also considered vegetation control in your channels to improve the conveyance facilities of your drainage channels. And I'd like to talk about each of the, each of the wastewater, storm drainage, and water distribution system individually. Your existing wastewater collection system has about seventy-nine miles of sewers ranging from four to twenty-four inches in diameter. The major trunk sewers include the Live Oak, Vintage Oak trunk sewer, the Coralian trunk, Walmer trunk, Stockton Carroll trunk, Quail Hollow, and Third Street trunk sewer. Your city has approximately eleven lifter pump stations, and the major pump stations include the Live Oak, which has a two-mile force main that pumps from the pump station all the way to the wastewater treatment plant, and the McFarland and A Street pump station. Your current average day flow is about 2.3 million gallons per day, and that's what MGD stands for, 2.3 million gallons per day. Here's a figure showing your existing wastewater collection system, and I'd like to point out, the heart of your system is right here, this is the Live Oak lift station. This, this lift station collects flow from the northeast part of the city, it all gravity flows to here, but there are also two pump stations, McFarland and A Street, which collect all the wastewater from the southern part of the city, and these pump and discharge into Live Oak, which then discharges 100% of your sewer through this force main. And when I say force main, that means it's, it's under pressure, it's pumped, through the wastewater treatment plant. You have one facility that conveys all your flow.
I could ask a question before you lose that slide. Through our city manager, can we in the future get electronic versions of these maps? Our packet has what appear to be copying machine-scanned versions, and it's just various shades of black, basically. And I would think for our website also, if we could get those, it would be helpful. Thanks.
Your, your, the wastewater collection system collects and conveys residential, industrial, and commercial wastewater to the treatment plant. As part of the project, as part of wastewater projects, we do what's called a flow monitoring program, and it actually places meters directly in the sewers and measures the flow, the velocity, and the depth of wastewater throughout the day. We implemented, we installed six meters throughout the collection system, measured flow for a period of one month, and that measured not only dry weather but wet weather flow. We were fortunate enough to measure the wastewater flow in the collection system following a rain event, and that's important because you get, you do get rapid increases in flow following a, a big storm. So we were very fortunate in, in measuring that flow. These are just some of the results that you measure. You measure average day and peak, peak day flow through one of these types of monitoring programs. Through the, from the data that we collected in the flow monitoring, we're actually able to come up with flow projections by land use, to entwine it back to the, your land use map in the general plan, we're able to come up with flows that would be contributed for each land use designation. And at build-out, I mentioned earlier that your current dry average day flow was about 2.3 million gallons per day. When the service area, when the plan area builds out, we're forecasting you'll be about 5.6 million gallons per day. Okay? So more than doubling. Following the flow monitoring program, we actually built a hydraulic model, and that's actually, that helps facilitate the analysis. We put all the physical information, the pipeline lengths, diameters, the depths that they are, we put that all in a hydraulic model to run scenarios and measure the capacity, the hydraulic capacity of your system, measuring how much flow can be conveyed through your pipelines. And for master plan purposes, you normally focus on your larger trunk sewers, ten-inch diameters, and larger, you really don't worry about the smaller eight-inch sewers, those generally serve smaller neighborhoods, have enough capacity, you really wanna focus on the larger trunk sewers. We divided your, the collection system into what we call tributary areas, tributary areas, and each color designation depicts a tributary area. What that means is that any wastewater generated within this color zone will eventually flow through this primary pipeline here, through the Live Oak pump station. That's the same thing for each of these other color-coded areas, though they ultimately reach a single trunk sewer after the water is conveyed to the collection system. And that just facilitates the analysis, and also helps your staff in identifying, if a developer comes and says, "We wanna build a home here, where's my wastewater go?", the staff can easily identify that this wastewater will eventually flow in this direction into this pipeline. As I mentioned, the flow monitoring program, we, we end up with data like this, and the way, the reason this data is useful is that we can actually run a calibration of the computer model, make sure that it's accurately depicting what actually happens in your collection system. In this calibration process, you can see what these lines represent. The red line represents what we measured in the system, the blue line represents what the hydraulic model is predicting, so you can see we do have very good one-to-one correlation. And these blue bars up here, that's a measured rainfall. And you can see, when there was a big spike in the rain, the, the rain coming down for this day, you actually did have a very rapid increase in flow. That's an indication that a lot of runoff is getting into the collection system for, actually, it's only one of the sewers that we observed this.
And for us engineers, this is really exciting stuff.
(laughing) It is. Okay, so, that was the process of how we came up with the data, did the analysis, and arrived at these general conclusions for the collection system. Overall, your existing system is operating very well, contains adequate capacity, there is one isolated area where you have, you do have some storm inflow entering your collection system, and that was a previous graph that depicted, showed that spike, and that's the, that's the sewer along A Street. It's actually, it's an eight-inch sewer, but it collects flow from a pretty large area, so that's why you do see that rapid increase in, in flow. Through this master planning effort and working with your staff, we're able to develop a well-planned-out service to your future areas, and we optimize existing sewers and maximize the use of more reliable gravity sewers versus lift stations and force mains. And by planning this out and relying more on gravity sewers, it's actually the best saving money in a long time, because pump stations and force mains, they're expensive to build, expensive to operate, and they come with long-term costs associated with them. Gravity sewers are much cheaper and more economical the way, way to go. One of the long-term solutions that we proposed was a gravity main to replace the Live Oak lift station, but the, the current project of the Live Oak lift station force main proved more economically, more economically feasible for the short term, so that's why that was, that's moving forward versus a larger gravity trunk sewer. So some of the, this figure shows the proposed wastewater improvements for the existing system. We came up with some relief sewers to solve that problem along A Street. You can see, most of the improvements are actually to serve your future users. Those were the majority of the improvements for the, for, for the wastewater collection system, were to serve your future customers.
At this point, we picked alignments relative to anticipated future land uses, it may not actually go down this street or that street, that was something that will be determined in conjunction with developments of those specific areas. It's just a general guideline.
I could ask them while you've got the slide up, for our consultants, when I say the notch, where your red line, if you can point to that, nope, come out, there you go, that white area, right?
Mm-hmm.
When would we need that new infrastructure versus some existing capacity if there's any left into the notch? Because it, what I, I think I've been told over the past is that we're already kinda out of any capacity, including coming out nearer the golf course and those commercial paths.
Right. It, that's, the benefit of this master plan is it, is the best plan overall as opposed to the best plan for right now. There is a little bit of capacity left in those areas, and one of the things that council could direct staff to do is rather than look at an organized plan for the total development, we could implement a program that whoever comes in first gets to use it. There are significant cost differentials from one property to the next, depending upon whether they have to build the rest of the project. Staff is making the recommendation that we proceed with this type of plan, and then we'll work out a plan for orderly expansion to serve everybody as best we can, and not give any existing capacities for who happens to be here first. There is a possibility of working out some interim solution for someone who comes in right now, gets a temporary connection like we did with the high school, but ultimately there's a plan to have them sewer a different way in the future. We'll just take that on a case-by-case basis as they came in.
Okay. Two, we had a public comment earlier about a number of things, but I think you've already addressed it in your study, you have separated what you're calling existing and future, but is it not correct, we have an obligation to serve the current city limits? And those are already existing people who may own property within the city limits, already have a certain anticipation to be able to use our existing system, that we have an obligation to supply them, even though they aren't there today, they would be new in the sense that if they built something tomorrow, but it's part of our existing system, part of our existing city limits.
As far, as far as I know, there is no legal requirement to do so. Council can make that a policy consideration, that we retain the existing remaining capacity for people that are currently within the existing city boundary. That was something we looked at the high school.
Right.
We showed council, we could take the high school and also maintain all of the, the capacity for people within the boundary. That would be a consideration that council could, if you wish, could give a capacity for some new annexation area that would otherwise be used for a school. The one possible difference in that would be if a property had been paying into an assessment district for improvements, they may have a vested right to that capacity.
Yeah, 'cause that, that's been my understanding all along, that, that, 'cause there's certainly people, and I think the speaker also brought up infill, there are vacant lots in the heart of the town that have never been developed, and someone's probably paid for years and years and years and years, and I think they would expect that if finally they decided to build something on that property, that they would have a capacity available to them. There's vacant lots in the oldest part of our town.
But, and, and again, the absence of a, a payment into assessment district, there is no standby charge currently in the city, so they've not paid anything to reserve that capacity for them. Again, I really suggest it's more of a council policy directive.
So that was a summary of the wastewater collection system. The existing storm drainage system, in fact, you have over seventy-three miles of storm drains. The existing storm drainage system, in fact, you have, uh, over 73 miles of storm drains ranging in size from two to 83 inches in diameter. The city is divided into 38 drainage watersheds. Uh, and that watershed is just another word for how the water's collected within a certain neighborhood and eventually discharged to the drainage channel. Uh, there's one detention basin and two pump stations. Storm runoff collecting in the city discharges at roughly 80 locations to one of the following channels, Dead Man Gulch, Dry Creek, Hang Creek, and Oil Road diversion. Runoff is discharged directly or stored in the grid detention basin and then discharged. Here's an illustration of the existing storm drainage system. The storm drainage system collecting conveys storm runoff to one of the previously discussed drainage channels. The blue hatch line represents the existing floodplain within the city. Here's a depiction, an illustration of the 38 different drainage watersheds. And I don't want to get into every watershed, but just, I mean, basically the idea is that runoff that falls within this area and is collected in these storm drains eventually discharges to Dead Man Gulch at that location. That's how this...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
It comes to mind, if that, like Dead Man Gulch gets full, then, uh, will, will you still be able to handle the, the collection from your storm drains? Or is it going to start backing up?
It starts to back up, but that's, and I'll get into that, that was like the hundred year storm event. You have your, your stage, your water level in Dead Man Gulch at its maximum, and that does back up the water within the storm drains immediately around Dead Man Gulch. But farther upstream, you still have capacity in your storm drains to collect and convey that runoff. And it'll, it'll stay at a, at a high level, but once Dead Man Gulch passes under Highway 99 and everything starts to lower, um, the runoff will ultimately get back into Dead Man Gulch.
So if that occurred, would the water then start bubbling up out of the, what am I trying to say, the, the manhole?
We start flooding?
Yeah.
Yes, you'd have water that would come out of the catch basins and manholes on the downstream sides closer to Dead Man's Gulch. It would come out of the catch basins, it would be going in further up the street, and then would come out further down, and just, and then flood the street.
Got you.
Yeah, the, the, our analysis, I mean, you have, you have a very robust system, existing system around Dead Man Gulch. You have plenty of capacity within the storm drains. Um, our analysis didn't show any flooding above one foot for that area. You will get streets and gutter flooding, but that's the whole, that's why, that's what they're designed to do. So everything works, works well. Um, as I start talking about the analysis, one thing is underlying, so, the soils that you have within the city dictates quite a bit of how much runoff you get because of infiltration, and I'll get more into that. Okay. Uh, here's a 24-hour design, typical synthetic design storm. Um, you get, you know, a little bit of rain at the beginning, and then it starts to peak, and the difference in these bars represents the 10-year storm, which has a 10% chance of occurring in any given year, or the 100-year storm, which has a 1% chance of occurring in any given year. The 10-year storm is used to design your, conveying your pipelines, the size of your pipelines. The 100-year storm is used to establish maximum depth for, depth for flooding. At what point do we need to possibly have a detention basin to avoid flooding of homes? So that's what the two storms are, two design storms are used for. For the hydraulic and hydrologic modeling, we use a SWIM model. SWIM is, it's a standard throughout the industry, it's a government-produced engine, and we use the MWH SOF graphic component with it. Uh, we looked at rainfall runoff processes occurring within the watershed, and what that means is how much rain falls and how much runoff is generated through the pipelines. We use the land use information and the prototype to quantify future runoff. Um, and we also use city staff observations to, to verify the model results. We worked with your staff and asked them, "Where in the city is it flooding, and do our hydraulic, our modeling results match your staff observations?" So how much gutter flow is allowed? Uh, most gutters flood six to 12 inches during large storm events. If a gutter flowed, flowed exceeded 12 inches or one foot, then that was a trigger, that was one of the criteria that we use to trigger an improvement. Uh, one benefit about streets and gutters is, is that they provide additional storage. You don't, you not only get storage from your pipelines, but you also get storage in the streets, and that's how, that's what they're designed to do. And they can provide conveyance as well as gutter flow or, or overland flow. So some of the storm drainage system conclusions, in general, again, the existing system has sufficient capacity to convey runoff, as I pointed out, the northeast area. There are some areas in the southwest part of town that are susceptible to flooding due to smaller storm drains associated with, uh, older pipe design criteria. Um, and future developments, we'll use detention basins to storm peak flow before the runoff is discharged into the drainage channels. Uh, the basins will be co-located at parks when feasible, and that's consistent with the policy within your general plan. So some of the storm drainage, drainage improvements, um, this is the southwest area of the city where most of your existing deficiencies were. Uh, this red line represents a relief sewer, these blue lines represent, uh, pipeline replacements. You can see, most of the work is for extending your urban services to these new areas, uh, minor existing system improvements compared to your future service. The water distribution system now, you have over 99 miles of pipelines, ranging from one inch to 24 inches in diameter, there are 10 active wells, you have a couple of backup wells also. There are two 3 million gallon and two one and a half million gallon above-ground storage tanks with booster pumps. Your current average day demand is about five and a half million gallons per day. An average day demand is, you take all the water you use in one year, you divide it by 365, that's average day demand. Your maximum summer day demand, and no, no surprise your water demand increases during the summer, is about 13.8 million gallons per day, so nearly a threefold increase. And your peak, your peak hour demand is about 19.4 million gallons per day. So you see, you do get rap, or big increases during the summer. And that peak hour demand usually happens in the morning and evening. Your morning peak is usually bigger than your evening peak, and that peak hour demand usually occurs on the maximum day demand also. Here's an illustration of your existing water distribution system. Uh, your system extracts, treats, stores, and distributes groundwater to customers. The tan lines represent these, like, eight inch diameter and smaller pipelines. Your blue lines represent 10 to 16 inch, I believe, and, and the red lines are greater than 16 inch diameter. So the majority of your pipelines are your six to eight inch distribution lines that go directly to homes and businesses. So what's the difference between max day and peak hour demands? Your max day demands are, are used to help size and quantify your supply requirements. It helps us analyze the fire flow requirements, look at emergency storage, and the minimum pressure criteria for ma, under maximum day condition. The peak hour demand, the demand for those three to four hours in the morning during the summer, helps come up with the operational storage, how much storage needs to come out of your reservoirs to augment the max day or, or your well supply to meet your morning demands and pressures. And also, peak hour demand also helps us analyze your minimum pressure criteria for that period. It also helps analyze pipeline velocities and head losses. You want to keep those to a minimum also. As I mentioned, uh, your, the existing demand is about five and a half million gallons per day. At build out, we're forecasting that the demands will reach about 14.7 million gallons per day for average day demand. So again, nearly a threefold increase at build out. We take, again, similar to the collection system master plan, we take all the information, pipeline diameters, where the tanks are located, and build a hydraulic model to help simulate , uh, the different hydraulic scenarios, come up with capacity evaluations. We looked at every facility within, in the distribution system. So what determines the water distribution system's adequacy? Most of it has to do with pressure. Uh, most people want adequate pressure when they wash their clothes, when they clean their cars, and when they take showers. That is the primary criteria for determining whether an improvement is necessary. We also look at the velocities and head losses, but not, not to the extent that we look at minimum pressure. Uh, fire flows, fire flows are generally very important to your fire department, wanting to make sure that there is adequate pressure when necessary to fight commercial, residential, and industrial flowers, fires. Um, that's the criteria that we use for evaluating the fire flows. This figure illustrates, uh, future water supply. The red line is the forecast increase in water demand, how much water's going to be consumed in the future. And the blue line represents every time we might need to add a, a new well to the system to keep up with that red line. So you can see, we're always staying just ahead of that maximum day demand when it comes to supply capacity. One of the benefits of, uh, recent work conducted by the city was, the cost road pilot well indicates a couple of things, that there's no arsenic treatment would be necessary at that well. There's, there's a possibility that increased capacity per well might be available. So basically, it means that less wells would be needed to, uh, meet your total supply capacity in the future. Some of the water distribution system conclusions, in general, I mean, your existing system for all three utilities, uh, is, has very good capacity to meet your current needs. Uh, you do need a new well to replace two, two of your older existing less productive wells. Some of the older areas in the city contain smaller pipelines, four and six inch diameter, those are for new development, you would never, you wouldn't put pipelines in that are that small. So some of those older pipelines are just insufficient to meet the new criteria for fire flow. So you have older pipelines, new, higher criteria for fire flow, and the small pipelines just couldn't meet in some of the areas. Um, in future, water supply, we'll, we'll utilize, uh, regional treatment. Instead of having treatment plants at every single well, we're using a manifolded system that centralizes your treatment, pumps water to a central location, treats it, and then distributes it to its customers. Here's your water system, and I mentioned, uh, some of these areas, uh, replacing the four and six inch pipelines to provide the adequate pressure to fight fires. Look, I mean, compared to what your future system is, your existing system, uh, improvements are very small compared to what the future service will be. So in summary...
Before you summarize what's it...
Yes, go ahead.
What kind of, without getting too detailed, what kind of basic assumptions, uh, first, when you showed the future requirements, do you assume average consumption per person will stay the same? Do you assume people will start to use less through methods of technology watchers that don't use much water and that kind of stuff? And then, what kind of either redundancy or backup water supply do you assume we need? 10% more than the average, or do you just give us a rough idea of your...
A good question. We, we actually assume that your historical water consumption would continue into the future. Um, I know with the 2010 Urban Water Management Plan, there are some, uh, demand management measures, and the states, the state has passed some conservation measures that, you know, cities are expected to achieve by 2020. But for these planning purposes, we actually did look at your historical and assumed that it would, it would continue in the future. Conservation will help your average demand production come down a little bit, but when you're looking at the analysis for, for max day demand and peak hour demand, I mean, those, that's what really dictated the size of your facilities in the future. And some can, some conservation might reduce the supply facilities a little bit, but probably not a whole lot. But I guess time will tell. And hopefully, we can conserve and reduce the amount of, uh, facilities and supply that you'll need. But we, I mean, this is a living document. We can easily tweak the forecast and push things out if the city does, uh, achieve more conservation in the future.
Yeah, they did look at historic water usage, not just what it was all over and now. We looked at it through the past years. We talked about the water implementation, now that we're going to be going to meters, we would expect a bigger surge, at least from those initial homes, that might help with the conservation, push some of the wells out by a few years. Also, the current economy pushing back development is going to push that growth back, and that's not represented. We're looking at the, the ultimate end. Buried in the report, there's estimates about what the actual usage was, and we've used 100 gallons per person per day for wastewater generation for the three years I've been doing this, and we're at 94. So it's, those numbers seem to just stand the test of time as far as a, a good basic macro engineering number, and then we'll look at it on an individual basis as we get closer to actual land uses.
Okay. And that made me think of two things. One, your water pressure, just antecdotally, my phone or email usually light up if people's sprinklers don't have enough pressure to pop up. I mean, that's, that's what I, most of us recognize, or you turn on the hose and have to shake it to make the water come out. So if we had something go offline, that's what people notice first. But the other thing, when you're saying that, made me think of is, um, if there's going to be changes in how society uses water, because California is not looking good for water in the future, um, is there a, is there a way you could model without a big revamping? In other words, how much of a change per person in that 100 gallon number would people really have to make that would cause you to change this much? Is it a 10% change, or a 20, 30, 40?
Really, we, we certainly could do that, and that's one of the benefits of having the model. We could very easily run lots of numbers very quickly, but it's really fire flow that manages the system, both the storage capacity, you go back to the fire flow, so I used to start running 3,000 gallons a minute for three hours, that's a tremendous amount of water to get from a tank or a well somewhere to a certain point. And so there would be huge, and you still have to maintain that. So unless those things, now maybe within, uh, sprinkler systems worldwide or citywide, um, we would end up, you know, which reduced that. One of the things we talked to the council about with the implementation of the sprinkler program was, the fire department may, at, at some point in time, when we have whole neighborhoods that have built out sprinkler systems, allow a reduced fire flow for that neighborhood. That would allow us to reduce both the main size, increase the distance between fire hydrants, even perhaps then reduce the size of a, a reservoir for that. Just, just coming back to residences, doesn't save you anything, really.
So most of the sizing here would be needed for the fireside almost no matter what?
The, the pipeline...
The other thing I was wondering is, once there's water meters, if people realize what they're using, and there's a direct cost relationship, if they also reduce their use by 10%?
You're also, what you don't see here is all of the little smaller mains that go in between what you do see here. And those lines are, you're liable to maybe see some changes, maybe from an eight to, uh, from a 10 to an eight, down within the individual developments themselves. But by the time you look at the peaking factors, it's not going to make much of a difference in these mains you see here before you.
All right.
Yeah, I think you also had a question regarding backup supply?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we do factor that, and we, we have your total capacity and then your operational capacity, and so there's some, um, there's some backup or reliability that we factored into these, this analysis.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. So a little summary, uh, we started out with some objectives, and we believe, uh, we accomplished them. We were able to evaluate the adequacy of the existing system. We developed improvements to mitigate the, some of the deficiencies. We provided a plan for the orderly provision of required infrastructure improvements to serve future needs and development. We also established preliminary cost estimates as the basis for updating the capital infrastructure fee program. The master plans were consistent with the 2030 general plan. We're able to optimize existing facilities to extend urban services. We determined economical solutions to some of the problems that we face, and, uh, we recommended improvements to preserve the current assets that the city has in the ground today. Some of the next steps associated with this project, or with continuation of the master plan, is complete a CEQA, or California Environmental Quality Act evaluation. Uh, so it's going to update the capital infrastructure fee program and develop an oversizing ordinance. And that's, did you, Greg, did you want to talk about?
Just one of the things that we'll have to do as we go forward is, when we have a developer, they're not going to come in and want to build right next to the city and then go move further out. It's likely that we're going to end up with somebody who wants to build is going to be the furthest out, or someone who does build close in, only needs an eight inch line, but they have to put in the 20 inch line or 24 inch line to serve people out beyond them. In order to allow or require them to oversize, we have to come up with a whole separate set of ordinances to allow that to happen, and provide for orderly reimbursement and sharing of those costs.
And as Greg mentioned, um, there are plans for an outreach workshop, and then coming back to you in late fall for final adoption. With that, if you have any further questions, we can go back and look at any of the slides or answer any questions that you might have.
Any comments from council?
No? If I could, Mr. Speaker, I would like to add one thing. This is related to some comments we had earlier. There is a sizable, uh, number of improvements that are needed, that were, that turned deficiencies in the system. They pointed out some of the areas where design criteria has changed, or where the terms... They pointed out some of the areas where design criteria has changed, or whether it turns out pipe sizes were small, or we have inadequate pressure issues. The council can make these decisions based upon staff recommendations, whether you address those or not. If we decide that the areas in the southwest portion of town are adequate with the reduced pressures, or the reduced system areas in terms of water, and what we have now is acceptable, then we don't need to do those projects. What staff is recommending, that those be considered to be upgrades to those sections, whether they're not having the same level of service as you might find somewhere else, where the pipes are a little bit bigger. Some areas may experience more flooding than other areas of town. We could go in and put some larger pipes in the ground and provide a betterment of the level of service, but unfortunately, there is a cost associated with doing that. What we've asked parole to do is come up with all the needed improvements, that we can go back and decide whether we can afford them, or how fast we can afford to implement those.
Other comments? There was information. I guess council is...
I have a question.
I'm sorry?
You'll have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you got cut off by Greg, sorry.
I'm curious, you say that we want, or we plan to go from lift stations to...
Gravity sewers.
Gravity?
Mm-hmm.
How do you accomplish that? And, you know, if you can do it by gravity, why haven't we done it before without the lift station? How does that work?
Got to go real deep.
Yeah, you have to go real deep. We did look long and hard at, it is possible to gravity sewer all the way out to the wastewater treatment plant, but you're thirty feet deep, and you have to have a lift station eventually. But it's very problematic, very costly, wanting to install the line that deep to begin with, and very difficult on the possible to get back to it for maintenance issues. So it is a balancing act, and we looked at whether it was better off to do that for the ultimate development of the city. Generally, you want to minimize lift stations. And so at some point in time, you say, okay, we're deep enough, it's better to have a lift station and a forced main from this point, rather than continue to go deeper and deeper and deeper, and dig yourself a hole. It's a trade-off of costs now versus long-term operation and maintenance costs.
In this report, you say, some locations such as the city's downtown or in more mature neighborhoods, the distribution system could not meet minimum fire flow and pressure requirements. Is that the way it is presently? We can't meet fire requirements, fire flow?
That's because in the downtown, a lot of it's mixed use, and so it's deemed as commercial, and the rate is higher. So if you ask, what is the designated flow rate, they will tell you the commercial flow rate. We're not saying it's not safe, we're saying that at a certain number, or you may have it, but you may have dips in pressure, we try to maintain a twenty PSI minimum pressure. You may achieve the fire flow, which you may cause the systems to go down below twenty PSI, which is when your sprinklers don't pop up, and the people several blocks away might not have any water for their showers or their sprinklers if they've opened up enough hydrants to fight a fire.
Would the proposed Galt Place, the senior apartments, would that have any say on this? Because there's going to be, what, eighty-six apartments?
As part of the Galt Place, they are replacing... Feedback. Turn it up to eleven. Galt Place, for example, is replacing a storm drain line that the master plan confirms, and Galt Place's engineers confirmed was being inadequate size to take their runoff. They are replacing some of the water mains for certain sections within their limits, you know, so...
That's in the plan.
For example, the Oddfellows Building is doing the same. The Old Town put a stub on B Street, and Oddfellows is carrying it to the alley. Sizing consistent with what's shown in the master plan. So, development, this will be a guide for me for development when development comes in and says, okay, master plan identifies, you know, these existing, you need to bring them up.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Well, yeah, I was just going to say, one, I think you did a great job, thanks. Other than, like I say, get me some color versions of those. It would, it seems we're going to need to do some prioritizing, certainly in the very near term, and that'll be part of our budget and everything else. But, and I know Barbara's been a champion of this, so I don't want to steal her thunder for it, but that live oak line from there out to the plant, I mean, that just, we've got to have some other redundancy or some, something there. So that would seem, and there are probably other things, that have got to be priorities as we go forward. I think, again, the existing population needs a minimum level of adequate service, so I would revisit some of your recommendations for where things to be improved or repaired or whatever, before we put it, other funds to other things. So I think that's just going to be part of our process to kind of pick and choose as we go. But I think you, as you said in the beginning, it's a broad brush of where we are, where we're going, some of the assumptions, you know, you were sort of handed, and the world's changed since those assumptions were drawn up. So I think, again, as we make our decisions, we just have to be aware of that. But in the near term, one to three years especially, you know, I think it's a little different than what some of the projections are showing us. And then after that, three to five years, I'll hope things improve a little and then beyond. But I think it's a great starting point, and the outreach that's coming up and the other things, be curious to see all the input as we approach the fall.
As far as the comment on the prioritization...
Yeah.
Part of the five-year CIP that we put together identifies those critical projects in the next five years and even beyond that that we're working on, includes the live oak lift station, enforced main, includes some new wells and some new other types of improvements. It doesn't go to the extent that this does. So this will help us in developing future CIPs, identifying those that are likely to go next after the ones that we have currently identified.
Then the last?
Go ahead, if you have...
Just another point of that, we'll also be able to bring the council with the rate study and the tools we have now, if council wants to do certain projects, what does that, if it's a rate payer funded project, what does that do to the rates? We'll be able to add, okay, an extra dollar a month, two dollars a month, ten dollars a month, or whatever it is, in order to do certain levels of improvements.
Okay.
Also tell the council we'll bring the live oak lift station, enforced main to you next time, for your next meeting. We had them both for tonight, we figured it would be too long a meeting.
Okay. And not to make it a longer meeting, but on the recycled option you mentioned, were you going to comment on that, or at another time, or because one of my concerns, and I was a big proponent of recycled water and all that, as I started to look into some of the practicalities of using it, I've heard some things that have made me think second thoughts about it, such as, you know, if you're irrigating landscaping with recycled water and some gets in the street, and then you have all these liability issues, and, what's the Windsor, kind of Windsor up above Hillsburg. We went over and looked at their whole system and all the purple pipes and the sprinklers, didn't work out nearly as well as folks had hoped. So I didn't know if you were going to, like I say, I don't need a ten minute, but...
We have nothing for council tonight, we're just not at that point. It was added too late in the process. It wasn't really anticipated to be included, but we added it, we had the funding to do so, and we'll bring it to council when it's available.
Okay. Like I say, I would be interested, not just so much of the cost, but have those liability problems improved. I mean, you're trying to do something good, just like we have. We put cleaner water in the creek than's in the creek, and we still get in trouble for putting better water in there that's in there, so.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments? We'll go to city clerk's report.
Before I give the reminders, just kind of an update for council. We had our census 2010 kickoff meeting last week for the Complete Account Committee. Because it's so important to the city, we had a pretty good turnout. We had churches and the press and the school...
Is there a public comment on that item?
Mr. Walters indicated he had a public comment during this...
No, he gave it...
Oh, he did, okay. I want to make sure we didn't overlook him.
Yeah, he switched and gave it ahead of time, sorry. Anyway, we had a good turnout, we're getting a lot of participation, getting the word out, getting posters put up around town, brochures out there, getting the youth committee involved, so just wanted to give an update on that. Just a couple of...
On that, when you and I went to the press release, they were very appreciative. You know, as many of the elected officials that could be there, but they really appreciated it.
Yeah, that was the grand opening of the census office, and...
Right, that was prior to...
Yeah.
Sorry.
And just a couple reminders. The certification committee will be meeting on February eighteenth at three thirty in the City Hall Community Room. The Commission on Aging will meet on February twenty-fifth at five fifteen in the California Room at the Parks and Rec Department. Also on February twenty-fifth, the SECOG Unmet Transit Needs Community Meeting here in the council chambers at four P.M. On March first, the City Council Youth Committee Meeting, six P.M. in the City Hall Community Room, which takes us to our next meeting of March second. A reminder for council, the council meeting of March sixteenth has been canceled, and we will have a council meeting on March twenty-third, which is the week after, on Tuesday. And we will be sending out reminders on that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Comments by staff? Jason?
It's just the fact that we, the good weather's allowed us to get some of these capital improvement projects completed in one case. The Twin Cities Trillion Signal is operational, as you driven past it, it's working well. There's still a few last, a few additional final improvements that need to be made on the north side with the one residence there, but for all intents and purposes, it's done for the driving public, which is a good thing. And we're hoping that the weather will last through this week, and we get some of the paving done on Lincoln Way and the parking out there as well, so that's good news. Any other comments from staff?
The 500 didn't get their paving done quite right, so.
Comments by council members? Vice Mayor Payne?
I attended a meeting of the Merge, which is the youth network organization that collects ideas from other jurisdictions, other cities, and they share them like a bank. If you have a project, you can check with them and see if another city has done it, and you don't have to reinvent the wheel. But they decided of the six promises that the city council voted to support, they're going to focus on providing safe place for the youth. And I don't know exactly where that's going, but that's going to be their priority at this time. Also, attended the Sacramento Transportation Authority Board, and the latest news, I'm going to read this to you, staff has preliminary informed the Measure Eight entities that forecasted to communities, I can't say that word, distribution for ongoing operations need to be trimmed twelve to fifteen percent. It's not really great for us, but that's the facts. And finally, I was able to attend a SECOG committee meeting for council member Claire who is out of the area, and it was on air quality and climate, not control...
Climate change.
Climate change. It was very interesting, so that's on my report. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Councilmember Claire?
Through the city manager to staff, or through the city manager himself, the charter school next to the pizza guys, is that operating as a charter school and charter, or is it just operating as some of the other services they provide? I know it's activity, but under what status are they currently operating doing?
I think they operate several things. I believe WIC is operated out of there. I have seen students out there, but I...
I've seen young people. I don't know if they're students or just...
Student age.
Yeah. But I was wondering, do we know, do they have a charter, or if they're acting as a...
From what I have seen, and I just read this in the newspaper, I think it was last week, they do not have a charter.
Yeah, my understanding is the school board actually turned it down...
Correct.
...a meeting or two ago.
Yes.
Okay.
So they're not operating as a charter school. I don't know if they're operating as a...
Well, that's why I'm asking, because I didn't think they had one, but there are a number of school-aged children seem to be there on a regular basis, so I was curious about that status, so, okay. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Meredith?
Nothing.
Okay. Just like to thank staff for your continual good work and good job, and thanks for the report and the updates. Appreciate that. I hope everyone has a great week, and we will adjourn the council meeting at eight forty-seven. Good night, everyone.